It's ten o'clock. I got ten o'clock.
We go by that clock, don't we?
Oh, that clock's wrong. The clock is behind us.
Good morning, all right. Good morning, sir.
All right, I've got ten o'clock. Ten oh one. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this edition. This is July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, ten a.m. Version of La Baca County Commissioners' courtroom. And we will start with a confirmation of real call. Precinct one.
Here.
Precinct two.
Here.
Precinct three.
Here.
Precinct four is out sick today. And the judge is here, so we do have a quorum with four of us here. And with that, we will have our invocation. Our most heavenly father, we come before you today. We are blessed to be living again in La Baca County for another day. We ask, Lord, that you pray over our employees of La Baca County as we make some changes today to payroll or we attempt to make some changes. And, Lord, we especially want to pray over our probation department. It's been probation week, and they've got a lot of contracts for us to sign. And we just honor them today. And we're so blessed that they're working in the lives of criminals and people that need some correction in their lives. And we just want to pray over them, Lord, and we bless them, especially today. And bless all of us as we make decisions for La Baca County. In our father's name, amen. And our pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Again, good morning, everyone. Before we get started on our action agenda item, I've got some things I want to talk about before we get started, but does anyone have any announcements or anything they want to bring up to the court that's not on the agenda?
Yes, this involves our county clerk, Ms. Steffick. I believe she has a birthday today.
Is that a motion? You put that in a form of a motion?
I put in a motion. She has a birthday.
Anyone in a second that's a birthday? Okay, we got a motion by precinct three, second by precinct one. It is the La Baca County clerk's birthday, so happy birthday. All those in favor say aye.
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 Happy birthday, Barbara.
Happy birthday, Barbara. Thank you very much for being our county clerk. You've got another forty-two years to go. You've got to set the record, you know. All right, I have one thing I want to bring up. The way we've been doing our agenda, I take some apologies. I make some apologies for this. I've been in maybe a hundred different courtrooms or different boardrooms or board settings. I just want to kind of set the record straight on how Commissioners' Court is supposed to be run. When an agenda item gets put on our agenda, only one of us five can put that agenda item on, so this is points of clarity. So when we read the agenda item, it's basically, that is brought to the floor at that point. And I apologize, I was kind of making, looking for motion or second to bring it to the floor. And there's some cases where an item gets put on here and, you know, it wasn't my agenda item, it wasn't Mrs. Kenny's, or it wasn't Wayne's, and so we're kind of making sure that someone's responsible for that agenda item. But by and large, if it gets put in print, it is on the agenda, and it will be open for discussion and debate and emotion. Okay? Tac basically says, we do not have to operate under Robert's rules. So anything we do before a motion, second, and a vote is basically discussion. Okay? So we have some form of Robert's rules, but we're not following the true Robert's rules to the key, to the nth degree because we don't have to. And in some cases, Robert's rules is in conflict with state statute. So that's basically the court's perspective from the Commissioners' Court. So it was brought to my attention, basically, if we type this on here, then the judge or whoever approved this agenda, it's going to be on the floor. So that's how we'll proceed from this point forward. It's also, this is interesting, we got some clarification. There's nothing in the state statute that says that any of us have to sign this agenda before it's posted. It's very unclear, but tradition has been, the judge institutes or compiles the agenda item and signs it and posts it. In the absence of the judge, it's usually pro temp that does that. But the state guidelines does not say we have to sign that before it's posted. So it's kind of interesting. So there's a lot of different ways to do it, but I just wanted to bring that to the court's attention, so when we call out an agenda item, it is on the floor. And we can start discussing it right away, or we can, no discussion, we can make a motion to vote. In some cases, we need to vote right away, some cases, we may need to discuss something. So anyway, I hope we're clear on that. Does that make everyone clear too? Okay, all right. All right, with that said, we'll go into our action agenda. Number one, accept donation from Rocky Creek Resources LLC to La Baca County Precinct Three for road repairs in the amount of forty-three thousand, six oh one and twenty-nine cents. Any discussion?
No, I'd just like to thank them for going above and beyond, taking care of that road before they even put the well in, because they'll be using it quite a bit. And we've been having a pretty good working relationship with Rocky Creek Resources and also Ranger Oil Company. So I just want to say a big thank you to Rocky Creek for doing this.
All right, and that will be found on page one in your packet. All right, any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept the donation from Rocky Creek Resources LLC to La Baca County, Precinct Three for road repairs in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred and one dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second.
Second by precinct one. All right, motion is made by precinct three, second by precinct one, to accept the donation from Rocky Creek Resources LLC to La Baca County Precinct Three for road repairs in the amount of forty-three thousand, six hundred and one and twenty-nine cents. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. All right, next, you'll find this on page two. Discuss and/or approve certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Gilbert and Evelyn Mosescheck. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. I don't even know how to start, Judge. This road is owned by Gilbert and Evelyn Mosescheck, and they are, I don't know if they're giving, selling, or just keeping it in the family, but the daughter's going to get some land, and the son is going to get some land, and it borders County Road one eighty-two. It has a private lane as access to Gilbert and Evelyn's house, and it will be accessed by both the recipients of the land. What I don't know is who owns the land under the road.
The private road.
Private road.
Okay.
I don't know what, I don't know who owns the land. I, I, Gilbert and Evelyn use the land to get to their property now. Either the daughter or the son has road franchise to one eighty-two. The other sibling will have road franchise to a private road, which is the same private road that the parents have access to.
Okay.
Well, the Moseschecks, are there any only ones that live on that private lane?
No, sir.
No.
So they share it with some other man?
They share it with two other families, at least two other families. There might be three.
Okay.
Property owners back there.
The application is, it came into the judge and Commissioners' office, it wasn't clear who owns that private road, which I think, I think it's Gene Carpenter, but I'm just saying I think it is.
That could be John, yes.
John Carpenter.
Yes.
Who's deceased, his spouse. When we, when the regulations were put in place in twenty twenty, it was never meant to prevent someone from dividing the property up amongst their family. And so I did speak with their attorney, Jesse Allen, on the phone about this issue, and again, we both reiterate the same thing, they're just dividing land up amongst their family, and they're using an existing private road. Now, it's not our right to say that we can divide it up and they can use that private road because it's not our road. So we can approve, we can approve the subdivision exemption, and we cannot, I mean, it's up to them how they decide whether they can use that private road or not.
Right, it'll be up to all the landowners on that private lane to say yes or no.
Exactly.
But as far as, if the other one has to come in on a county road, all they need is an entry permit.
And so.
Yes, right, yeah.
And talking to the attorney, their attorney didn't have a, he didn't seem to have a problem with it, he said he, they would work that out if there was a problem, but again, we're going to get in a situation where we know Gilbert and Evelyn, we know Gene and John Carpenter, and if they have some kind of internal agreement, that's fine, but when we get into a situation years from now where we do not know the parties involved, that's what the state is asking us to do, is to get involved and say, you know, we don't like the, we don't like easements. The state does not like easements anymore. That's what they're trying to get away from. Easements create problems fifty years down the road.
Is that going to force us into making a public road out of a private road?
It does not force us to do anything.
Okay.
What it may force us to do is say, well, and again, based on talking with Jesse, I don't have a problem approving this now, but at some point, it's, well, we may approve this if we see the private road access has been given to this new subdivision. In other words, I think that Carpenter, Ms. Carpenter would have to have a say. And so whether she allows someone else to travel on that road, she's obviously allowed Gilbert and Evelyn, but maybe not their kids. So again, we could table this until we have some clarification on that, if we wanted to do that. I don't think it's an urgent matter. This has been submitted to us probably over four or five months. We were waiting on some further explanations and so.
What other explanation are we going to get?
I don't know, other than, like I said, Jesse is representing Gilbert and Evelyn, he didn't have a problem, didn't seem to have a problem with it.
All right, who would we get another explanation from or a solution?
I think if we found out who owns that private road, and do they have a consent to let this subdivision take place?
If it's needed for use of a private road, is there an exemption date on, or is there a expiration date where it just ceases to be a public road?
There lies the problem. So let's just say, let's just, for the sake of argument, let's pretend that this was a hundred subdivisions going to come and have access to this private road. We would be.
If we pretend, what if Ms. Carpenter decides to sell it and?
There lies the problem. So I would think we probably need to at least give notice to her that this is being done.
Since that's with precinct one, I would like to make a motion to table this agenda item two.
Okay. Motion made by precinct one to table this agenda item.
Second.
Second by precinct three. Any other further discussion?
I do not have a timeline to table it, but.
Well, we can at least table it for another, I don't know what we're meeting in.
Till we get some.
I think we need clarification.
Clarification.
Yeah, I believe so.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion made by precinct one, second by precinct three to table this agenda item till we have some further clarifications. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion is tabled. All right, item number three, discuss and/or approve certificate of exemptions from subdivision requirements for Keith and Allison Kavinka. That's out of precinct two. Any discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. This is a simple track of ground that's being divided into two pieces. It is exempt from our subdivision requirements, and so I would make a motion to approve item three.
Okay, motion made by precinct two.
Second.
Motion made by precinct two, second by precinct one, to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Keith and Allison Kavinka. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Number four, discuss and/or approve certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Leanne Wildon and Gary Cooper. That's out of precinct four. And precinct four is not here today. That's found on page nine of your agenda item packet number one. There's two packets. Is there anyone here today that wants to speak on that? I don't see anyone else here. Okay.
This is off of Highway one eleven.
Well, it says they have access to State Highway one hundred and eleven, and it stated that they want, the intent is for ag use.
Okay. Naomi, do you have any comments on this?
So she's just selling ten acres to Mr. Banning, who owns the neighboring property, so, and it's going to be direct access to one eleven.
Direct access to one eleven, okay. All right.
No, it's all, it's a single buyer, and you don't have to worry about no interior road, he's coming off of one eleven, he'll be okay.
Based on the plot that I'm looking at, it seems like that's the criteria. All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the certificate of exemption for subdivision requirements for Leanne Wildon and Gary Cooper.
Second, second by precinct one. Motion is made by precinct three, second by precinct one, to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Leanne Wildon and Gary Cooper, out of precinct four. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number five, discuss and/or approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Trimmer and Tammy Wardick. That's found on page thirteen. And that's also coming out of precinct one.
You answer, Your Honor. This is a large piece of property, and the owner is selling ten acres, and it borders County Road one thirty-two. So with that being said, it would be exempt from our subdivision plan. So I move that we approve certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Trimmer and Tammy Wardick.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we had a motion made by precinct one, second by precinct two, to approve the certificate of exemption from subdivision requirements for Trimmer and Tammy Wardick. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. All right, found on page eighteen, this is discuss and/or approve the vehicle inventory tax budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, and that is brought to you by our tax assessor collector.
Yes, Your Honor. This is per section one eleven point oh nine five of the local government code, so it requires me to file this budget with the court every year. This is my vehicle inventory tax that we collect monthly from dealer sales through County. And it goes into my separate account, and I do need to keep the interest that we earn off of that. And that interest earned, I can use it to spend for my county office for things like, you know, computers, printers, and I have a budget this year, I'm going to try to get my security cameras replaced, so that's what my intention is. But this is a budget that I have to, I am required to put on the agenda every year.
Okay. Go ahead.
So right now, you have two thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
I do.
And you have cameras, security cameras, two thousand, two hundred dollars. Well, you got it right there, huh?
I'm sorry?
You had it right there.
Yeah, yeah. If that's what it's going to cost, yes, I can use that money and that interest to spend on those things.
Okay. Your Honor, I move that we approve vehicle inventory tax budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is made by precinct one, second by precinct three, to approve the vehicle inventory tax budget for twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty, twenty twenty-four, as provided by the tax assessor collector. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. All right. Number seven can be found on page twenty. This did not have to go through court, but I'm bringing it to everyone's attention just so we can fully discuss what's been going on in the courthouse with the AC. Item number seven is, reads, discuss and/or approve La Baca County Courthouse compressor replacement chiller number one quote. That quote was provided, let me give some background, last week, was it last week we had our budget workshop? Two weeks, two weeks ago. I can't remember, it was two weeks ago. Okay, we came, I got to the courthouse a little bit before eight, and it was eighty-one degrees and humid inside. The chiller had shut itself down, the power was off, so it tripped a breaker and shut itself down. Had that happened on a Friday night, and we went home and came back Monday, it would have been a disaster. There was water on the floors, it was bad. Anyway, so we had to call Dakin to come out to find out what's going on. Turns out, there was a, one, for sure, one faulty compressor, there's four compressors on each chiller, and so Dakin came out and fixed it or rigged it, so that our system is still running right now, we have two compressors, two chillers. And so Dakin is advising us to replace two of the compressors out of four on that one chiller. And so that cost is, and that's why I brought it to the court's attention, is twenty-two thousand dollars for service and repairs to that. I say twenty, twenty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and forty-nine cents is the labor to do that. They're charging fifty, five hundred dollars worth of labor.
Twelve thousand for the compressor set.
Yes, twelve thousand, one hundred and forty-seven, sixty-five cents for the compressor set. So it's, and then the refrigerant cost was two thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars for the refrigerant. I asked Chris this morning, Chris Hermes is the head of our maintenance department at this time, where else can we go? And he did, he said, this is what, he's called other courthouses, and they're all using, courthouses of similar size are using Dakin to do these repairs. So we're kind of forced to use this to some degree, but I just want to bring that to the court's attention. I don't like being forced to use one vendor, and I don't have another set of vendors to bid from.
And these people are either where, San Antonio? I think.
Houston, San Antonio, I'm not sure.
I think right here, I'd say two-ten is the phone number.
San Antonio?
How many compressors do we have?
There's, there's two chillers, each chiller has four compressors on them. So if we replaced all our compressors right now, it'd be eighty-eight thousand. So, but this is the main compressor that's used heavily. The other one's kind of a backup compressor, or runs in emergency situations, or when it's having a hard time adjusting. So this, these, this has been thirteen. We've got to have it, basically, so.
We couldn't go with window unit?
Doug Kubitschek said no window units.
No window units?
Doug has a question also.
Yes, sir. You want to come? Doug Kubitschek is here, we're going to ask him to come to the microphone, he's part of our building renovation team.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Kubitschek.
Yeah, thank you. I do have one question. Did Aiken indicate that, I hope these aren't rebuilt compressors, these are brand new.
As far as I know, these are brand new.
Okay.
That's what I was told.
Because, you know, we don't want to buy somebody else's problem, and they can rebuild them. I mean, and from what I gathered, I talked to the Texas Historical Commission in regard to when those were put in with the renovation of the courthouse eighteen years ago, other courthouses that were in that first round of grant money, they're all having trouble with the compressors, they're at the end of their kind of life cycle. So that's going to be something that maybe, not that we want to do it tomorrow or anything like that, but in the sense of, this is coming down the road. So if you're reassured that they're not going to use the rebuilt ones, that's great. Yeah, and I don't know how long they're going to.
I will make, I will make sure of it.
Yeah, because that, they'll do that and not really say anything. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Doug. All right, with that, I would entertain a motion on item number seven.
I'll make a motion to approve of La Baca County Courthouse compressor replacement chiller one quote.
A second.
Okay. Motion made by precinct three, second by precinct two, to approve the La Baca County Courthouse compressor replacement chiller number one quote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. All right, before we get to number eight, I want to, I want to preface something before we get to number eight. Number eight, the general item is going to read, discuss and/or approve the following countywide policy changes. Before we read those changes, I want to read how we got to those changes. I called for an ad hoc committee to be formed of other department heads and officials. That committee was Shayna Opila, Karen Bluta, Lori Winsky, Deborah Sevchik, Barbara Steffick, Michael Harmon, Tim Decker, Kenny Ziegel, and Kyle Denny. We met, and we also asked Kenny, one of the Commissioners to attend that meeting. We asked, before we make policies as a court, we wanted to hear from all the other department heads and officials so we can do this jointly. So that's how we arrived at these next agenda items, and I'll read them now, and we'll go over it from there. So number eight is discuss and/or approve the following countywide policy changes. Number one, any overtime or comp time hours worked, allowed, accrued, or paid out must be approved in advance by the immediate supervisor, and there must be sufficient budget within the department to either pay out overtime in the pay period for which it occurred, or sufficient budget to cover the cost of accumulating comp time should the employee fail to use their comp time in the given fiscal year. Number two, any unpaid overtime, also known as comp time, must be used by the end of the fiscal year or paid to the employee at the end of the fiscal year in which the comp time occurred. Unless otherwise approved by the court, all employees should have zero balance, should have a zero balance of comp time to start the new fiscal year. And number three, approve, approve the payment on payroll check dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three of accrued comp time for all La Baca County employees. Any discussion? Go ahead.
One quick question.
Sure.
What is the calculation for that budget wise?
If, before we start, I want to, I want to set out to say, the previous court meeting, we agreed to pay out the sheriff's comp time, because the sheriff, we knew the sheriff has some, some monies to cover that, so we knew we could do that. So then we went back to the committee to address, how do we do this as a whole? And then also, can we, can we cover it? So I'm.
So this is separate?
This is more or less the same things we did with the sheriff, but now we're creating policy, but this policy will now be incorporated into our policy manual.
Okay.
And so, but it was, at the last court meeting, it was a hundred and one thousand, I think, or maybe a little less.
Yeah, a little over a hundred and one thousand.
Long-term accrued liabilities has kind of got out of hand, and that's for multiple fiscal years. And so we're asking now that we need to clean this up, and this needs to be addressed in each fiscal year on comp time.
But it turns into a big liability.
So to address, Mr. Fairclough's question, let our auditor speak.
So as of right now, as of current, the majority of the general fund departments can pay out their own comp time that has been accrued. That would include county judge, county clerk, elections, JP one, tax assessor collector, county attorney should be able to pay his owner as well, just by moving the budget around. And the senior citizens director of banking comes out of the online of the general. Road bridge, y'all should all be able to pay out your own as well.
Would you take it out of general fund?
No, you're going to take it out of your own funds.
I just thought of that.
Because you can have your own road and bridge funds that you pay your employees out of, and general fund gives you money. and general fund gives you money.
That was a good question, Mr. Fuss.
Can we vote on that?
I wanna add. I do wanna add, and we talked about this in, in that discussion, is, uh, the sheriff has the largest budget and largest, he's got, well, I mean, fifty employees. JR's here today, I'm not sure how many employees, but a lot of employees. Turnover creates budget, but he's not, they're not the only department that they've had turnover. So, there's multiple other departments that have had turnover. And when an employee quits or resigns, and we can't hire them back quick enough, the workloads fall back on the employees that are in the system. So, they've been asked to work overtime, also known as comp time, and not getting paid for it. So, it's been accumulating. So, I think this, this, I mean, we've had a collective buy-in to look into this, and this will take care of it, and this will make it, comp time issues is, it's either overtime or comp time to be used in the given fiscal year that it was accrued. So.
Uh, JP, just one second, I'll tell you the way.
The policy looks like it would certainly prevent us from, uh, accruing this on an annual basis and, and keep, keep us current budget-wise.
Correct.
So, I think.
There's some, there's some comp time we're gonna have to get just for the holidays, you know?
Yeah.
So, yeah, but it'll keep it to a minimum, and it won't get to build up, cause you gotta use it one year.
I think this is a prudent, prudent move to do this.
And like someone asked, well, can't they, can't they roll over a hundred hours? Well, um, if they rolled over a hundred hours, guess what? They didn't do it, they didn't take the vacation either. So, now they've got a hundred hours plus, they need to go, either be taking off or get paid for their time served, um, and then go on. So, it, it's kind of been, I, I'm not saying it's been abused, but there's a lot of employees that are just really holding on to that content. They got a lot of hours. There's a, I won't name the name of the department or division for, they could take off for three months, four months if they wanted to. Uh, that's not right either. Now, you're holding a department hostage, so to speak. So, we have to be more prudent, um, going forward, fiscally responsible.
So, the total for general fund is approximately thirty thousand dollars. That's all of the different departments. The only two departments that would have to take from another department would be the County Auditor's Office and the District Clerk. We do not have funds, by the end of the fiscal year, we will not have funds to support that. Uh, the other departments will have their own funds to be able to support that. Road bridge, uh, precinct one has fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars in comp time.
I didn't quite catch that, four dollars and what?
Fourteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Precinct two has two thousand, fifteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Precinct three has four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cents. And precinct four has four thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and twenty cents.
Seems to me like there's a little discrepancy between one, two, three, and four there.
The only thing I can tell you is, this is not come from you, this is probably come from your predecessors.
Ah, thank you.
Wow.
I know who I am, I'm the predecessor. This has been an ongoing problem for you.
We try, we try to live in ours, I mean, when you got an emergency, you got an emergency.
Um, I will add that the committee that we formed to do this, uh, there's other issues we wanna address as we go forward in the policy manual, we're gonna do that in the fall. But this, this policy here, um, cleans this up and clears this up this fiscal year, and we have the budgets allowed to do it, and we clean it up now, and then we go forward from here. So, that's my, uh, court's recommendation.
I do wanna make a comment, this is as of right now, so if you allow your staff or your rodents to accumulate between now and the last check of September, it will go a little higher. So, we have to start managing it now.
And I want, uh, in our policy manual already says that the department's headed responsible for overtime, you have to have it approved. We're restating it here, and, uh, once we approve, if we approve this, I think the, maybe from the judge or the commissioner's court's office, we will send out a letter to all, that you can distribute to your employees that, how this is gonna work, so they're clear on it. Um, any other discussion?
Does that mean that during the year, if they, they can't carry over any comp time?
They can carry over comp time throughout the year.
Throughout the year.
But when we get closer to fiscal year.
September.
October first, it wipes out, when you start.
And then you start again.
Right. Any other discussion or comments? Criticism?
No.
No? All right, with that, I'd entertain a motion to, to approve all three of these, uh, in.
Can I just say one, two, and three?
Uh, you can.
I make a motion to approve the following countywide policy changes of number one, number two, and number three? Or do you want me to read it?
I'll, I'll summarize after we do it, to make sure it's on record.
One second.
We had a motion made by precinct three, second by precinct two, and for the record, I will, I will acknowledge this. Discuss and approve the following, we had a, a motion made by precinct three, second by precinct two, to discuss and approve the following countywide policy changes. Number one, any co- any overtime or comp time hours worked, allowed, accrued, or paid out must be approved in advance by the immediate supervisor, and there must be sufficient budget within the department to either pay out overtime in the pay period for which it occurred, or sufficient budget to cover the cost of accumulating the comp time should the employee fail to use their comp time in a, in the given fiscal year. Number two, any unpaid overtime, also known as comp time, must be used by the end of the fiscal year or paid to the employee at the end of the fiscal year in which the comp time accrued, or comp time occurred. Unless otherwise approved by the court, all the, all employees should have zero balance of comp time to start the new fiscal year. Number three, approve payment on payroll check dated September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three of accrued comp time for all Levaca County employees. That was the motion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? That motion passes. All right. Okay. Next, you're gonna switch over to your second agenda packet. I'll get mine pulled up real quick. There was a hundred and eighty-one pages in the second agenda packet. Agenda items nine through fourteen are dealing with probation department. All right, the first one, uh, the agenda item, number nine will be found on, starting on page one of your, uh, second agenda packet. And that reads, "Discuss and approve contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Brazos County Juvenile Justice Center." Do we have, do I hear a motion?
Ms. Darzak, come up here.
Ms. Tracy Darzak has been summoned to the podium. You wanna state your name for the court, please?
Tracy Darzak.
All right, Tracy.
Tracy, all, all these contracts, it, it's what we go through every year, right?
Yes.
And basically, they do have a year renewal without really court approval unless the prices go up, right?
That's correct.
Per, per facility.
Everyone that I review has an evergreen clause, which allows them to automatically renew on the following fiscal year unless the rate changes. And the reason why we're here today is because all of the detention facilities have increased their rates.
Right. And if the rates stay the same next year, this time, we can just run it through to.
Yeah, I won't be.
It's going another year, you will get.
I won't be back before you. It's an automatic renewal on all of them.
As my understanding, they use these one, two, three, four, five, six contracts, uh, that's not all of your contracts. You can bring some more, some more to us next time.
Yes, um, your honor, um, I tried to have them all ready by the deadline, but, uh, two other counties were not able to get them to us in time, so they'll be on the, uh, August Commissioners Court agenda.
Okay.
Who, who, which are the other two counties?
That haven't given me their contracts? Uh, I'm trying to think, Bell County was one of them, their attorney still hadn't approved them. And, um, Rockdale is a facility that we use post, and we didn't have their contracts in time. And we may be including Grayson County, we held off on it because the rate was extraordinarily high. Um, but, given the situation with the number of detention facilities closing after COVID and the lack of staff to operate these facilities, this has become quite competitive when you're trying to find beds, and there's often, my officers will go through five or six facilities until they finally find one that will take our juveniles. So, just rest assured that we are going to go from the most affordable to start with until we have to go to the most expensive if we cannot find a bed. But we do have good relationships, personal relationships with every one of these detention facilities, and they've always helped us out when we've been in a jam.
Yeah.
All right.
Was it a significant increase from last year?
Oh, yes. I mean, um, the highest one, Grayson, was three hundred and fifty dollars a day, and that's why we held off on them. But we talked to another co- county, and they were like, you oughta go ahead and contract them just in case.
Yeah, just in case.
I don't know if you're aware of this too, and I'm hoping they're gonna redo this. Our agency's part of the Central Ch- Texas Chiefs Association, and so we were given money by TJJD last year, like the different sections across Texas. So, we voted to take a hundred thousand dollars and basically buy beds with, uh, Rockdale and Atascosa. And that gave us first choice, if we got into a bind and could not find a bed anywhere, they would hold that bed for us, and anyone in our central Texas could utilize it. So, it's like we kind of prepaid for that option. So, that's something else that we're trying to take advantage of to avoid using and paying these rates. I can't tell you, out of all the three counties that I represent, Levaca has been only hit with eighty-one hundred and thirty dollars for this past fiscal year for detention costs. Compared to Colorado County, who's looking at seventy-eight thousand dollars.
How much, seventy-eight thousand?
Seventy-eight thousand.
Talking to other, uh, county judges in our area, Gonzalez, Colorado, Fayette, um, DeWitt, we're very blessed right now that we have, um.
Minimal.
We have a great school system, we've got a good parenting system, community system. We don't have the problems that other counties have, knock on wood. Um, but, uh, it's scary, these other, these other surrounding counties are running out of jail space.
Yes.
Our jail is pretty, pretty, the numbers are up there, thirty-five inmates is, is a lot for us. What is our capacity in, in our jail? Forty-eight inmates is our capacity, and the last thing we wanna do is see, we're, we're leasing inmates that, uh, because of capacity reasons. Um, but it's an epidemic, it's, 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 it's on the rise, I'm not sure how we're gonna handle this. But there's some other counties talking about building jails.
When I worked in Gonzalez, they had, the beds were always full, and they had to contract with outside jails and put those people over there, and it's, it's been an ongoing issue over there. So, I'm asking today if y'all will approve my contracts items, agenda items nine through fourteen.
Okay. Well, we're gonna go through them one by one, cause they have to be done that way?
That's fine.
So, uh, we appreciate your time, and we appreciate all that you'll do for your, our probation.
Thank you, it's a pleasure serving y'all.
Thank you. All right, so, do we have a motion on number nine?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Brazos County Juvenile Justice Center. Now, now, can we add San Patricio, Guadalupe, Victoria, Hayes County, and Atascosa County with the same?
They're not in consent, I think we're gonna have to go one by one.
One by one, okay.
Yes, sir, sorry. That's the way the agenda item is writ, is presented, but, uh, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by precinct three, second by precinct two, to approve the contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Brazos County Juvenile Justice Center. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Agenda, item number ten, "Discuss and approve contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and San Patricio County Juvenile Justice Center." Do I hear a motion?
Yes.
Motion made by precinct one?
Second.
Second by precinct two. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
That motion passes. And that was a motion to approve the contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and San Patricio, Patricio County Juvenile Justice Center. All right, number eleven, "Discuss and approve contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Guadalupe County Juvenile Services Facility." Do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve the contract with Guadalupe County.
Second. Motion is made by precinct two, second by precinct one, to approve the contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Guadalupe County Juvenile Services Facility. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? I'm sorry, precinct two, second by precinct three, can we correct those? It was, uh, motion was made by precinct two, second by precinct three on agenda item number eleven.
I know, oh, but golly.
Sorry, sir. All right, item number twelve, "Discuss and approve contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Victoria County Juvenile Justice Detention Facility." Do I hear a motion?
I make a motion to approve the contract for short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County and Victoria County Juvenile Justice and Detention Facility.
Second.
Motion is made by precinct three, second by precinct two, to approve the contract for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Victoria County Juvenile Justice Detention Facility. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Number thirteen, "Discuss and approve contract for secure long-term and short-term residential service of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Hayes County Juvenile Center." Do I hear a motion?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the contract for the secure long-term and short-term residential service of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Hayes County Juvenile Center.
Second.
Motion made by precinct two, second by precinct one, to approve the contract for secure long-term and short-term residential service of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Hayes County Juvenile Center. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. Lastly, number fourteen, "Discuss and approve the contract for secure long-term and short-term residential service of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Atascosa County Juvenile Center." Do I hear a motion?
I'm with.
Motion made by precinct one?
Second.
Second by precinct three, beat you to it. Motion is made by precinct one, second by precinct three, to approve the contract for secure long-term and short-term residential service of juvenile offenders between Levaca County Juvenile Probation Department and Atascosa County Juvenile Center. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Motion passes. All right, with that, we're moving into consent agenda. Unless a member of the court requests a separate consideration of any items, all under the consent agenda are considered to be of routine nature or have been previously deliberated by the court in an open meeting, and therefore may be approved by one motion second in vote. Do I hear a motion?
I so moved to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is made by precinct two, seconded by precinct one, to move into consent agenda. We were now in consent, uh, agenda, and our microphones will go off at this time.